So yeah, you don't have a whole lot of staff here. Mostly we're talking about your, this is your city manager here. Now, but, but all, but Rogue Valley Council of Governments has for quite a while provided contract planning services to Gold Hill. They do that to a number of jurisdictions, into Jacksonville, sometimes even Grants Pass, Shady Cove. So then basically what they do is they've got a planner who kind of floats around and provides planning services when you're, when they're needed. So in that case, if you do have Rogue Valley Council Government staff here, they're acting as your staff in that regard. So that's pretty much either, either your city manager or
We had that, you were, you did, and both guys, you know, doing their research for a year or so.
Yeah.
A little longer than that.
Yeah. So currently we are assigned through the Rogue Valley Council of Governments, Chandel Park is our assigned planner. But the whole planning staff at Rogue Valley Council of Governments is available to us as things go. How it works is we pay anytime they're working for us, we're paying an hourly rate on each employee that's working on our behalf. And so we try to be judicious about when that is so I can make sure that if we're spending money, we're doing it wisely and it counts for something.
Definitely. Um, I was gonna say this later, but I mean, I'm available as a resource to you all. Typically I interface with the city manager or planning director, community development director, but I definitely have gotten calls over the years from planning commissioners or city councilors who just wanted, you know, kind of get my input on things. So my, my door is open when it comes to that. And I'll provide my contact information later, just as a resource to you guys. So in regards to your relationship with the public, so be fair, that's the number one rule. So that, that's not just with the public, that's with people that are, you know, have an application before you, anyone that's presenting. You know, you don't want to create a situation where people feel scared to participate in a public environment. Follow open public meeting law, do your homework. That some, some places are better at that than others, but you know, it's pretty obvious when, if you come to a meeting and folks haven't read the materials. I mean, sometimes there's a lot of materials and getting through it all doesn't work, but do what you can and come as informed as you can. We'll get into the difference between quasi judicial legislative hearings, but for quasi judicial hearings, you need to follow the rules fairly precisely or else you open yourself up for potential appeals.
Now, I have a question about that for you. We have a hearing coming up, quasi judicial hearing, and an individual counselor or planning commissioner might want to go investigate on their own and look at the property on their own. Is that what you mean by doing your homework or?
That's one of the things, and we'll actually talk about that specifically because it's, it's technically ex parte contact if you do a site visit, which is fine. But yeah, I mean, so Gold Hill's pretty small. I mean, you know, if somebody's proposing something downtown, you generally, I mean, you probably drive by it a lot, so you know where it is, you know what it is. But if it's a But if it's a site that you really haven't seen in a while and you go out there, that's part of doing your homework. If you feel that. Can be helpful. We'll talk about what that means if you actually go out and do a site visit and how you're supposed to kind of present that in a minute. Wrapping up your relationship with the public. Be respectful. It's the same as being fair, right? And it's in a certain way, be respectful, especially to each other. You guys probably have all been here for a while. There are certain city councils and planning commissions that get along better than others, some that are in the newspaper more than others. Try your best to just get along with each other. It makes it for a much smoother job for everybody. Keep to the topic, don't digress, you know, there's especially in a smaller community, I shouldn't say that. In in any situation, there is an opportunity to kind of, especially if you start doing testimony, and we'll talk about that a little bit. That kind of isn't to the point that gets at something else and you might want to address that. To the extent that you can, you really want to try to stick to the topic at hand and not digress. I mean. You maybe you have all day, but often you don't. So you know, you want to be fairly efficient about it. And then so that kind of gets at my next. The next point here is the delicate balance between thoroughness and efficiency. You want to be respectful. You you want to be fair to everybody, but at the same time, you're also running a public meeting, so you have to be fairly efficient about it. And that's it. That's a. It's an interesting dance. Okay, last bit on this, and then we'll get into some other stuff here. Stressful situations, you know, land use can be stressful, right? I mean, it's often about. A proposal of in a property that somebody owns or that and and a lot of. Neighbors have feelings about, like meeting members have feelings about. Sometimes they're the most stressful types of hearings. Like that you can be part of. There are different ways to respond to stressful situations. So one is often you can adjourn the meeting. If if it's a quasi judicial decision and you have to meet certain timeframes, you can ask. The applicant to basically grant an extension, and we'll talk about that later. So that you don't feel like you need to hold the hearing, even though it's getting fairly contentious. But you could even adjourn a meeting and then reconvene completely online. So that's an option for you guys. You guys are doing live streaming now. It's actually required since 2022 to be able to do that. So you can, if if it gets a little too heated in here, you can, you know, you can cut out the face to face stuff and just reconvene online. For legislative decisions, and we'll talk about the difference between quasi judicial legislative. You don't, they're not time sensitive, you don't even need to make a decision, and you can choose a whole different type of meeting format. So just hit the pause button and then say, hey, this isn't, this is too confrontational. This isn't working out. We need to do it, go about it a little differently. Don't descend to the level of vitriol that's directed at you. Sometimes these get a little personal, you know, especially in smaller towns. It's usually not meant to be personal. Sometimes it is, unfortunately. But as you know, a planning commissioner, a city council, you kind of have to take the high road, right? You're in a position where you don't want to. Go there, so you do your best to maintain a level, you know, even keel and. And not descend into that kind of situation. And then, but also don't be intimidated. You guys are the decision makers, right? So the community are providing input, they've elected you, you've appointed the planning commission. Your responsibility is to make decisions. So. While it can be stressful, especially in a quasi judicial decision or a type of hearing, you have to make a decision decision. So. It's not an option to to not make. Okay, so some of the tools that you guys have at your disposal. So you have your comprehensive plan. So. Once again, even though it's an older document, I've read a lot of. Comprehensive plans that are old and I have to say, most of the time I come away thinking, wow, there was a lot of really good. Information and really good, a lot of good thought, a lot of good background documents that have been put into the foundational document for your comprehensive plan. It provides the your factual base, kind of provides your overall goals and your policy and your framework, and also provides maps. That have to do with a bunch of different stuff. And you've got your zoning and your development code, right? So those are the things we talked about earlier. They set the specific regulations, you know, setbacks, uses, density, heights, that kind of stuff. They also set forward the criteria that your decisions need to be based on. And the process that you need to follow. Okay, go to the next one.
You want to do one more?
Yes, no, I don't know why I didn't. I didn't set this slide up, so I don't know why it's just bouncing through that. Okay, so there's a few different types of land use decisions. One is a legislative decision. So. This is when you're adopting an amendment to your policies or your ordinances, you're making bigger changes to your code. You're making your updating your comprehensive plan. It's something that affects a large geographic area, many ordinances, there are many ownerships, so often it'll. Apply to an entire zone, for instance, or. A certain type of development, certain type of use. Legislative decisions, there is no, no decision is required. Really, what you're doing is you're setting policy, and if you decide not to make a decision, you're deciding to nominate that policy. So you're not. You're not required to make a legislative land use decision. Legislative land use decisions are always adopted by elected officials. So that means the planning commission will make a recommendation to the city council. The city council makes the final decision.
We have one in the works right now with a food cart policy. That the council initiated, there's going to be some recommended changes that will come. To you guys and with the planning commission who will make a recommendation back to the council, and then the council will vote on whether they want that policy or not. So. Both have a role, but you guys will be advising yay or nay, I don't think you should or yes, please do this, and then you guys get to make that decision as the elected body.
Yep, yeah, you're acting as the decision makers or as the as the lawmakers, really, you're creating new law, right, for the for the city in this case with food vendors. This isn't part of the slide, but. City council, you should also know that you don't always have to agree with the planning commission. You know, planning commissioners are the ones that are, you know, focused. On the on land use planning, that you should be looking at them for advice and recommendations. Sometimes a decision is very political, though, and you you sometimes will make a decision. That is is contrary or slightly different than planning commission. It's within your ability to do that. On both the legislative and a quasi judicial, we'll get to that later, but legislative decisions, since it is. Policy that you're changing, you don't need to agree, you can make a different decision. There's less procedural restrictions that apply to legislative decisions. And you will get into this, but your information in making a decision can come from a variety of sources, including ex parte contact. And we'll talk about that in in detail in a little bit. You need to have findings, so you need to draw conclusions as to why and back up why you're making decisions. But there's not the same level of specificity as a quasi judicial application. And then there's also no statewide state mandated noticing unless you trigger what we call a measure fifty six notice and we. You don't need to be involved with that. We can. Your staff is the only one that needs to know about that. Okay, ten clicks to the thing. Okay. So quasi judicial decisions. So in in those type of decisions, really, the decision makers are sitting as an impartial tribunal. Usually what what these have to deal with is. One, single ownership or just a couple ownerships, if a couple properties together apply to do a certain thing. Usually it's somebody wanting to change a use on their property or build a new building. And they have to go through, they're not, it's not like an over the counter kind of premise, they have to go through the planning commission. I don't know what your thresholds are for Gold Hill. Often, planning commission is the final decision maker for some things, but then some things they still need to make a recommendation to council on.
And honestly, I don't know that any of us know.
Okay.
I'd say that the planning commissioner or the planner. Myself and I, we have faced which ones of those are, and so one of the things we're trying to do is map which things get what, which checks in for which decision.
Okay, so just an example, like, you know, somebody has just bought a building downtown and now they want to do a new use there. And it's still a different use than what was there before, and it's it's considered a conditional use permit. Through the city, they would come typically, they would come and and staff would review it, make a recommendation of the planning commission, then planning commission would be able to make the final decision on that. Often, in that case, it's a P of that decision if is appealable to the city council. That's usually how the the situation works.
And we have another component where the county does some of our permits. So a portion of the city does, a portion of the county does.
For building permits?
And change of use, yeah.
Oh, change of use, okay. Yeah, so that kind of stuff would happen outside of the land use arena. That wouldn't be a what I put land use decision. Usually that's like a change of occupancy or something, or change of use that would be kind of at the same level. But if it's, if somebody has, say, a barber shop, and now they want to open a bar. It may be that now that's a completely different use with completely different potential complaints, right? Traffic, other things, and the neighbors, you know, might want to be involved. Usually that would. Trigger it still, even though the the county would be really reviewing the building permit for that change of occupancy. But the planning commission would need to approve that conditional use permit to allow that use to happen. Before they really, before the whole thing was allowed.
Is a conditional use permit the only required if it's outside of the zoning for that, or is that within the zoning?
No, you know, we'll have to dig through your code. I've got, I I cover Jackson, just being Douglas County and all the cities, so I don't know everyone's code in detail. I I've been through the code, but it's been a long time. Typically, what what will happen is, say, you have a code for your. Your commercial district. You'll have certain things that are allowed outright in your commercial district, and then they can just come in and submit a building permit. Or a change of occupancy, and then certain things that that are a conditional use. So usually there's like a hierarchy of. Of those type of things, because. You want, as a community, you want to allow a variety of different uses in your zones, but some of those uses you have to acknowledge are going to have greater impacts than others. So you create a process to allow for that.
I think one of the examples I've heard that we've dealt with so far is some of the residential and commercial mixes in our downtown town is. That the residential is off as unless there's actually a building facing forward and potentially that's in the code, but. Yeah, it'll be fun for us to review.
You can always make changes to those types of things if you don't agree with those.
Well, we have some of those apartments in the back. But they're probably all sistered in, we've been running that way for a while.
Yeah, no, I've heard that from from previous counselors in the past. Good and bad at that. Okay, so for quasi judicial decision making, let's see here once. So you want to want to, so basically you're acting as a tribunal, right? So you're you're making a decision. You want to treat all people fairly, like we talked about, you want to. You need, and we'll get into more detail about this, but you need to to let all the parties know. What you know. So we'll, we'll talk about what that means. You need to disclose any ex parte contact. We'll talk about that in a second as well. And your information considered. Needs to be factual, so you need to be basing your decisions and your recommendations. And your findings off of. Back a factual base. It's basically like here. Incorrible. So the the last type of decision is a ministerial action. Often that's, and I use the term over the counter. It's a permit that requires no exercise of discretion. It's a straightforward situation. You've got a. A single family residential zone, and somebody comes in to build a single family residence. And it's really clear whether they meet or don't meet, say, a twenty five foot setback. Or not, it's not, it doesn't require any discretion. You look at their site plan, you go out to the site, you know that, you don't need to use any judgment. So those are the types of decisions that are made, kind of what we call over the counter. And those are the ones that are likely just going to the county to have to have them do that.
Yeah, those would need, those won't come before.
That don't, no, those don't come before you. This is just kind of setting up the full hierarchy. So there are some things. You know, that you don't see that that happen, but you set the framework. So say you guys make a change to a zone to allow certain type of use. And you say, and you say, we should just allow that that use as a ministerial outright permitted use. You're making, you're making that allowance and allowing for that to happen in the future, but you won't see any of those. Come through you.
And are planning commissioners allowed to make that decision, but or that's a recommendation to the council, but the council would decide?
Well, to make a change to your code, it would be considered a legislative decision. So then. You it would be like a code update, so the city council would need to make that decision. But the planning commission with the recommendation. I'll be and go to the next. Okay, so let's, we're going to go through just kind of the hearing procedures a little bit. First, start with legislative hearings. Those are the one that you're creating policy, you're changing a bigger, you're doing bigger picture stuff, changing your code. Everybody has the opportunity to participate. There are no concerns with. With you having ex parte contacts, and I should have put this earlier, sorry, I'm deferring that till later, but. A conflict of interest. Could play a part. So we'll talk about ex parte contact bias. And conflict of interest in just a minute. Just keep in mind with legislative hearings, you have, there's more. Opportunity for you to be able to go out in the public and talk to people and hear what people want to, you know, say about or what their opinion is about a certain legislative change you're doing. And by being biased. Because you are decision makers and you've been elected, bias doesn't come into consideration here. We'll talk about what this, what differentiates those things in just a minute, though. Quasi judicial decisions, and this is what happens before the public hearing process starts. So sometimes there's the pre application. That's usually for really for only bigger things, and I don't think Gold Hill probably has a requirement for pre application. Sometimes people just want to, they'll come in and say, hey, is it worth even my time to submit this application? Like, is there even a chance I'm going to? Be able to get approved to do this. So they set up kind of a meeting, you know, with, you know, either the council government planner with. Your city manager to kind of go over that. Once an application is submitted to the city. The city reviews it for completeness. So what they're doing is going through the application to make sure that. That all the information that's required of them to submit, they've submitted that. And if they haven't done that. The city would or the council governments would write a letter and say, hey, you need to supply us with this and this and this before we even. Deem it complete, before we even move forward with with the application.
To me, it seems like that would go through the planning. They would do the application because they're the ones that's making the recommendation.
Not at that.
Yeah, I know, so.
The legislature.
Oh, for, so we're talking about quasi judicial, so legislative, this doesn't pertain to legislative, there's no. There's no burden put up, because usually a legislative matter is something that you all have initiated on your own. Sometimes it'll come from the. Well, in some jurisdictions, they allow for legislative amendments to be brought forward by people in the community, but you don't have to make the decision, you don't have to do that. So it's kind of more of a city initiated thing at the end of the day. These are, this is when, you know, a property owner downtown wants to do something, and they submit this application. It's a conditional use permit, we'll go with that one still. So they have, it's, they're required to have a conditional use permit. They submit the application to staff. And staff's like, well, you've only, you've missed like half of the stuff that you're supposed to submit. You need to submit that, you need to, you need to, you know, fill in those gaps before we'll even. You know, start to review it and take it from schedule a hearing and all that.
So like our checklist of the things that required to do for the permit. There is a list from the county that we have on different things. And like when someone comes in with plans, we need four sets. You know, that's not generally known kind of thing. So there's just things that we would say, no, we still need this. And once we get that and we do our part and do our stamping from our side, then they take it to the county and go to the next phase. But there's certain things that would trigger. That situation to come here. But just in and of itself, that first process and reviewing of completeness is at the staff level.
Yeah, we have. To my recollection, in the last two and a half years, we haven't seen any applications. Like. In the beginning, it's always gone to planning staff. And we don't see it till they've prepared their. In the beginning, it's always gone to planning staff, and we don't see it till they've prepared their.
Yeah, their recommendations.
Yeah, recommendations.
Yeah, that's how it should be, definitely. I don't know of a any jurisdiction where they would kind of hand over an incomplete application or something that where there wasn't that. Recommendation to a planning mission.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so quasi judicial decisions have specific noticing requirements. So legislative decisions. Really, there there are, besides the the measure fifty-six notice, there aren't requirements. That doesn't mean that you. You shouldn't or you can't notice. You know, if you have an item, for instance, that you think is a big deal. That you're making a decision on from a land use standpoint, you can, you can, you can notice everybody in the city. Um if you wanted to, if you had the ability to do that, or put put um information, often. People will put information in utility bills or something to go out to say, hey, we're considering this on such and such a date. Um, but you don't need to do that when it comes to a legislative decision. Quasi judicial decisions, when it's um an applicant submitting um. There are specific requirements. So the city needs to put notice, uh one the hearing is gonna be, it needs to go to the applicant. It needs to go to abiding property owners. Um, within a city, it's a hundred feet, within U G N urban growth boundary, outside of the city, it's two hundred and fifty feet. Any recognized neighborhood associations, but you prob, do you have any neighborhood, any recognized? It has to be something that's recognized in your comprehensive plan, I believe.
The C C N Rs exist in a couple neighborhoods, but I don't know that they actually went as far as creating a homeowners association or.
No, not even that. So this would be not, I mean, there's a lot of homeowners association, say, for instance, in Medford. They don't all get their own notice when it comes to something, but it's like, um, if you have a specific neighborhood association, yeah, we should, we don't even really need to go there. Gold Hill's small enough where it doesn't make sense to have a specific um neighborhood association. There's like Josephine County, for instance. They've got a number of um neighborhood associations, like in Williams and, you know, and like places, you know, and the Applegate that want. To be able to review certain applications, you know, in their kind of neck of the woods. Um, and then if you have any other specific noticing requirements in your local code, you need to meet those. Usually you don't, but sometimes, sometimes you do. Um, the notice, the notice needs to explain the nature of the application. If the list, the applicable criteria that that you're gonna be reviewing in your ordinance, uh reviewing the the case uh by. Um, usually you have the the you have to notice the location, so either the street address or some other tax lot information. Uh, when the hearing is gonna be, you need to um disclose the uh what's called the raise it or waive it um policy, and we'll talk to that um in a little bit. Needs to be mailed at least twenty days before the hearing. You need to be able to provide contact, high contact for where people can get additional information. And where they could go to actually get the material and and if they need to pay for it. So it's it's pretty strict, um but once you, you know, once the city gets the noticing down, I mean, you don't, you're not reinventing the bill every time, you know, you will just. Change a certain things, but it is, it is required and 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 for good reason. Okay, so getting into quasi judicial decisions, and this is both for planning commission and the council. Um, if the council hears something on appeal or if something were to come to you otherwise. Um, you know, uh did you guys have a script? Do you, did you work off or are you working on something?
I tried to come up with one at the last meeting. I didn't quite do it right. I've reached out to a couple cities and they, we do have some land use scripts that. I've found in the computer that they've used in some past.
Okay, I can remind me after this, I'll I'll help you. I I I can, yeah, I can find it, a few good ones. So usually, uh, the planning commissioner, city council will have a script because there's kind of a few things that's that you need to go through. Um, you need to describe kind of the rules of the proceedings, like how how you're gonna proceed, the rules of conduct for the hearing. Um, the razor or waived statement, and I'll talk about that a little bit more detail, but really that has to do with land use hearings. If somebody um in the public participates, they have an opportunity to appeal that decision. But they can only appeal that decision based on things that have been raised. So if they, I'm just gonna use an absurd example because it's easy one. If um if uh if somebody got a business approved downtown. Um, and the some of the neighbors don't like it. They could appeal it, but they couldn't appeal it based on the fact that the person wants to paint it blue. Because they've never raised that before, you know, or whatever. They have to, they can only, they can only appeal it. Based on things that they brought up, or things that have been brought up during the hearing, not them in individually, but just in the hearing in general. Um, they, there is always a right to a continuance of the first hearing, and we'll talk about that in in a minute. Um, often the planning commission, or or at least you could turn it over to staff, but you want them to outline the criteria. That you're reviewing the application under. And then there needs to be a declaration of ex parte contact bias and conflict of interest, which we'll talk about in a minute. Um, and then uh then the staff report is usually given by by staff. Usually that's gonna be your planner from the council governments. Um, or um your city council, your city manager here. Okay, so the hearing itself, um typically, you, after your, after you, after you heard the staff report, you open it up to testimony. Different cities and counties do this differently. Um, some, uh you always open up to the applicant first. Um, and then usually open up to the public. Sometimes jurisdictions will open up to people that are for and people that are against. I don't know, I don't, I wouldn't necessarily recommend doing that, but if that's how you do things, that that's fine. Um. But you open it up to the public. So you open up the applicant first, you open up to the public, and then you allow um time for the applicants. To be able to rebut if there is testimony against their application. They have, this is um, this is a judicial type of hearing, it's quasi judicial. So you allow them the opportunity to rebut that information. If anybody requests a continuance, you must grant the continuance, and the automatic continuance is for seven days. Um, the chair will, do you guys have any questions?
Just wondering, what would prevent somebody, if they're opposed to something, to just continuing to request a continue?
It it's only required to allow the continuance on the first hearing. That's it. And then after that, then after that, you don't need to continue to indulge that.
Can you explain what leaving the record open is?
Yeah, and we'll and we'll get, I'll get into that, is it the next?
No, it's fine. I just thought of the list. We don't have.
Yeah, no, well, that that's fine. So um. If you um feel that everybody has had the opportunity to participate in the hearing, everybody in the public and the applicants. And somebody requests a continuance, or you want there to be a continuance because there's still something unresolved. You can, you can uh close the hearing, but leave the record open. So um what that means is people can still submit new information into the record. Typically, you direct them to submit certain types of information. Um, because if you've closed the hearing, that it's uh can get complicated as far as having new information. Um, but we'll all, I'll talk about that in a little bit more detail. I'm gonna provide an example of uh kind of an effective way to to do that. Um, when you get, when it gets time to, after you close the hearing and it gets time for a decision, um. You basically have a couple steps. You have a discussion, you've got a a motion and a second, and then you deliberate on that, on that motion. Some jurisdictions really don't like the city council or the planning commission to have any discussion before a motion's put on the table.
Mm-hmm.
I, and that, and that, and that's fine. It can be awkward sometimes if there's still some unresolved items. For somebody to lay a motion on the table, you know, because they're kind of just doing it from a, just to be procedurally correct. So sometimes it makes sense to just say, I wanna just kind of, let's talk about this first before we put a motion out there. But regardless, there's usually a just a little bit of a discussion, uh a motion, and then after the motion, that's when the deliberation happens. That's when you're actually, you you know, evaluating what the the criteria are, what the application is at hand. Um, and then there'll be the votes, and then based on what you've deliberated on, you're either gonna vote. Um, in favor of the motion and or if not, and or not. So um and that motion might fail, and then you can have another motion, like.
Now, is after the testimony is given, uh usually in that decision or discussion, is that where I would see the commission or the council asking questions? Uh, of either the applicant or the others, or is it while they're giving their testimony that you would recommend the questions be asked?
Yeah, that's a good, good question. Um, so you definitely do that before you close the hearing. So once you close the hearing, really what that is doing is. Cutting off participation between you and the public. So you, um, at that point, you feel like you have all the information that you need to be able to render a decision. You may need to deliberate a little bit to figure out some nuances, but you have all the information. Um, if you have questions of the public or of the applicant, you you can, you do that. Um, either while the person's up there, or, you know, everyone has a little bit of a different style. Or if it's in the pu, the public is a little bit more complicated, usually you would wait for them to um, you know, use their time up, and then you could ask them a question then. Or if you think about it later, you could call them back up. But you have to do that before you close the hearing. That answer your question?
Yes.
Okay. Can we go to the next one? Okay, so this is really, the this here is really, really has to do with um. Your script, and I'll work with you on, I I won't, I won't go into too much detail on on these hearing tips, but um. Having a script to go off of is really helpful to kind of make sure that you're kind of checking the boxes and going through the right procedure. Because unfortunately, when i- if if an item um gets appealed. By a member of the public or by the applicant, um they can appeal based on just procedural grounds too. So if they think. That um you messed up in your procedure. You can be appealed on that, and and you might give the item remanded back to you just because you messed up on the procedure. You really don't want that. It's not a very efficient way. To do business and um. Yeah, it kind of detracts from the actual decision that you make.
We'll make sure to get you good scripts.
Yeah, no, it's very helpful, definitely. Um, okay, so quasi judicial um decisions have a hundred and twenty day timeframe. Within urban growth boundaries to for a city to be able to make a decision. So once the city. Accepts the application, so the if someone submits an application to the city, the city has an opportunity to review it to make sure it's complete or not. If it's incomplete, they send them a letter and say, you need to submit this new information. Once they submit that new information, the city will send them basically a letter saying your application is complete. That starts a hundred and twenty day clock ticking for a decision. So. The um applicant has the opportunity to allow for extensions of that a hundred and twenty days. So for some reason, say. They were scheduled to come before the planning commission, but something happened. There's a big snowstorm and there isn't a quorum of the planning commission here. Um, and and now they're not gonna get their, you know, thing approved in a hundred and twenty days. They can request an extension, or if there's other, if it gets controversial. And they need time to talk to some neighbors or something. They can request, they can request extensions or allow for extensions. Those extensions can go um add up to two hundred and forty days, basically to, basically a year is how long the the um. Permit can go for, the decision can go for. So in a circumstance that if a city doesn't make a decision in a hundred and twenty days and the applicant. Either hasn't or won't grant an extension, the applicant can file what is called a writ of mandamus in local court. And what that does is it essentially uh forces the city to make a decision. Sometimes if if they'll make a decision for you based on the circumstances. So it's something you wanna try to avoid if at all possible. Okay, so in in making a quasi judicial decision. You need to have findings. So your findings are basically you, if that you're gonna have a staff report from um your staff. Council government staff or or um. City manager kind of outlining the circumstances. They're also gonna have be finding typically some findings in there. Whether the um application meets the criteria or not and why, um. So how each one of them um has been satisfied. And basically providing you the the facts that you need to rely on to make a decision. Um, and and those facts are important because they um provide kind of the blueprint of your um. Decision making. So they explain how you drew the conclusions that you drew, and those are really important if something does get appealed. If somebody does question why are you making those just that decision, or why did you make that type of decision? You can go back and you can point to, well, here, this, these are the criteria, and this is what we are looking at, and this is why we made that decision. It's it's really important for quasi judicial decisions to be able to do that. Um, some tips. You wanna uh make sure that your staff especially is addressing all the applicable criteria in their staff report and in their recommendation to you. Um, if you can address each one of them separately, it helps because it doesn't, it doesn't get convoluted, um, you know, in within other um criteria. Um, be clear about stating the facts that lead to the conclusion. Um, if there is inconsistent evidence. What you need to do is basically outline the rationale as to why you decided to choose one piece of evidence. Over another. So you can't just make a decision, if people submit two bits of conflicting information, you can't make a decision without explaining why you. Decided to choose one piece over the other, and that's in, that's important.
And it can't just be that I like chocolate ice cream over strawberry ice cream. You have to say that the chocolate's better because it actual marshmallows and almonds and it's rocky road.
And that's what the crit, that's what the criteria in the code required was was rocky road. Yeah, definitely. And it to the degree that you can pu, uh put them in clear, understandable language, it it's good for everybody instead of using a lot of jargon. Sometimes it's unavoidable, but um to the degree that you can use common language, it's better. Um, common problems, I mean, you could probably figure these out based on what it just said. If you don't address failure to address each criterion. Um, deferring, uh this is an interesting one. So sometimes jurisdictions will. Um, there'll be a requirement in your code, and the application doesn't address that criterion or doesn't meet that criteria exactly. But what you do is you say, well, we'll create a condition of approval to make it, to make them meet that. So they need to come back with a revised site plan. That shows that that this is met. That happens a lot, I will say. It's something that you want to avoid. Really what you should be doing in that circumstance, say. You don't meet this criteria right now, come back with a revised site plan and we'll review that and we'll make a decision based on that. Um, generalizing things too much, not not using um specificity, they're using sufficient facts to to derive uh your your position. And um, yeah, and that the other one's just kind of done.
Is there a, is there a s? Standard for, let's say, what a set plan should look like?
No, it's not exactly, but.
It could be on a napkin.
I'm not kidding, some of the stuff we saw early on, I, it uh eighth grader could have done pencil sketch better than. When we had it, there was a decision made, or there was a decision made on a pencil sketch drawing that ended up kind of messed. And because there was a misinterpretation of what this drawing was actually representing.
Yeah, so so some codes, I if if we should look, we should look through your code. Some codes will be very clear. Like Jackson County, I worked for Jackson County for a while, their code is very clear. Like, you need to submit it on an eight and a half by eleven sheet. It needs to be to scale. It needs to have these certain things. You know, it needs to have a scale, definitely. You need to, you have a north arrow, like, it 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 has, you know, it has to be very. Specific, all the property lines with the dimensions on there. If you have, the more specific you have in your, in your code of what you're requiring. The the more compliance you're gonna get, right? Because you can read, because if somebody submits something on a napkin then. It doesn't have a scale or a north arrow or a strong crayon, uh you can say that this isn't, this isn't a complete application. This is an incomplete application. You need to follow this, and even Jackson County even has examples of how to draw a plot plan, they call that, you know, so how to draw that site plan. Oh.
It, cuz I don't know what our code states as far as. Plan requirements. Is that something that staff could have a? Does it have to be, I guess, legal?
Right, right now.
Be in code, or could it be something that Lily could say, this is our standard for plans?
Right now, what I've seen is we're going off of what Jackson County requires. Because, um, we're a step, but the permits are issued through them. So we're. Following Jackson County's requirements.
Yeah, but the requirements are gonna be for building plans submitted, so there, you're gonna use their code for that. If somebody is submitting, say, a conditional use permit, say they don't need a building.
We have a couple forms that we have.
Yeah, we should look through those.
Yeah.
Look through your code, is, so they answer your question now.
Desk in the corner.
I'll, I'll just help people draw though their site plans. The, the short answer though is if, if it's very clear, if it's in your code, you can rely on that, um. To require them to do that. If it's just in, uh, in informational brochure. That's more advice than anything you, and how far you could push that would, um. Would be even limited, right? So if they said, no, I, I only use crayons.
I would encourage our planning commissioners to take part in our strategic planning that's gonna happen on March first. Uh, as the code may be a topic that comes up. No, no, there's been another one out today. We're just doing the one day. We're bringing it down to one day on the first. So, we're gonna make it easier, give you a Saturday one. Um, but, the code is a big deal. And there's a lot that needs updated. And in the meantime, we're trying to comply with what's there. Some makes sense, some doesn't. So, so it's a matter of, uh, there'll be opportunity for us to weigh in on some of these things if we get the blessing in the. Strategic planning to address it. Wink, wink.
Okay, so, um. The burden of proof, we're talking about quasi judicial applications. So the burden of proof really is on the applicant. So the applicant needs to submit that, then the application to demonstrate that all applicable criteria are met. It's not staff's responsibility or your responsibility to, to come to certain conclusions or to fill in the gaps. So. Um, they should be submitting an application that shows that the criteria are met. And sometimes that requires that applicant to sit down with staff ahead of time to identify what are the applic- applicable criteria so that they know that. You know, what they're all needing to mean. Um, really what this is saying is this really is, it's the applicant's responsibility to respond to issues raised by opponents. It's not your responsibility in a quasi judicial application to, um, respond to, um. To criticisms of the application. It's the applicant. So you're gonna review the applicant's rebuttal to that and their response to that. Along with the tell their testimony and come to a decision.
You mean asking a planning commissioner to review it?
Yes, we'll get into that. That is not okay. No, that's not okay, because.
And, and I'm gonna say it's not okay for that applicant to come to a city counselor and say, review this before the council would have a. You can.
Now, they should be going to staff.
Yeah.
They shouldn't be going to council, they shouldn't be going to planning commission. And if somebody does come up and talk to you, and we'll talk a little bit more. About ex parte contacts and that kind of stuff, really to the degree that you can. You know, have them talk to staff. That's really where you want to be as a decision maker. You don't want to be put into a situation where you're having to then. Acknowledge, yeah.
If you think about a court of law and you have a judge sitting up on the judge's bench. And the prosecutor goes to that judge before a hearing and says, hey, will you just check my work real quick? Make sure I got it right? Now you gotta ask, how does that defense have a, a chance? If the judge has already weighed in on what the prosecutor needs to do. That's criminal law, but it's the same thing as with you guys in a quasi judicial. You are having a hearing where the applicant presents their evidence. And other people can present their evidence and then you have to make a ruling on that based on those facts. If somebody's talked to you ahead of time, that's tipped the balance. It's not justice. And, and so it's, it's giving you information outside of that hearing, uh, that is not necessarily fair.
But I was saying, most, most of the people, you know, they're not educated, so. You say you have to have their, 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 they do their best and, oh, I miss them.
So, so, that's a great question. So if they can't come to me and staff and I don't know, because what would happen is if I don't know. I'm gonna reach out to Jackson County and ask and try to get that answer or a planner. I may call Josh, say, what do you recommend? The other thing that is out there is there are people that have complete businesses. Just to help people get through the planning process. Uh, there is, um, what do you call them?
Land use consultants.
Thank you.
So people don't even know that.
I understand that, but, but if it is gonna be a challenging process to get permits and different things through. You'll find that people hire consultants and land use, uh, consultants just to help you get through that process. And, but, I understand, but if they have a complicated permit. That's on them to have to be able to do it right. Uh, because if they don't. And something happens in that house, what's the liability to the neighbors if that house slides down the hill and they didn't have it shored upright? Or what's the liability of, of the water runoff if, if it's not captured and right and routed to the stormwater, you know, that kind of stuff. There's things that can happen if they don't do it right. And. Our job is to try to help them get through that process to keep the whole community safe. And to go towards that plan. And, uh, we don't have the regulations just to make it hard on them. The regulations are generally for safety. And for consistency and towards meeting, you know, the services and stuff, but we'll try to get the answers. And I know that we as a staff are all new. I mean, that is one thing that is a challenge because. Uh, you know, we've got one staff that's been here almost eighteen months and the rest of us have been here less. Uh, in the office here, and so, uh, we depend on getting questions answered from other places a lot right now. Uh, and as we're trying to come up to speed on it, uh, we'll try to help the people as much as we can, but the idea is, um. As this is saying and getting back to the slide, unfortunately, it's on the applicant to meet. The obligations of the code and to meet the obligations of the burden of proof and the hearing and all that kind of stuff. So, uh, we'll do our best to help them through that process, but it's important that that's the staff. Or the planner or that side of thing and not the commissioner or the council, because then you can't weigh in on the hearing.
Well, what I'm hearing from Josh is we have to know our facts, just facts. If you don't know, then you tell them, I don't know, but I can find out for you. And that's when you go to staff, that's when you go to.
Well, and even that, to say, go ask the city manager.
Exactly.
Don't say, I'll find out for you. Say, go talk to the city manager.
Yeah, I mean, if somebody ha- has having trouble drawing a site plan or, you know, figuring out their application. You know, wh- what I would recommend is they, they start with the city manager. So give a call and. Either you, you know, sit down with them for a couple minutes and just, you know, give them a pamphlet to show them how to do a site plan or. Um, Chandel, um, from the Road Valley Council of Governments can help them, you know, construct, you know, kind of the framework so that. She gives them, she gives them advice to be able to submit that application.
And she helps in that process right now. So we have several site plan reviews going on that are going through Chandel at the, uh, council of governments. And she's very equipped to help in that capacity.
So I'm gonna, uh, move on a little bit here because I want to get to the ex parte contact because it's really relevant to what we're talking about. So, uh, the last piece on this burden of proof for quasi.
Only three more hours, guys, what we're doing.
I know, I'm sorry, I'll, I'll move fast. Um, I don't have a whole lot, actually, a lot, a lot more. Um. This, uh, city, you, the city cannot use matters that are not part of the approval process. To, uh, approval criteria to make a decision. So. You, you just, when it comes to a quasi judicial application, it may be tempting to. Uh, because you don't like it or because you really like it, to be able to use other rationale to support it or to not support it. It needs to be based on criteria. And that'll keep you out of trouble. You stick to that. Okay, so this is, this is the, uh. Yeah, go down one more. Oh, did I, did I, yeah, oh, maybe I moved some stuff around.
Okay, so we have next.
Okay, that's, let's go. Oh, we already did that one, didn't we?
We did that one.
Yeah, sorry, this one, sorry, that, this one, maybe that.
You had it in a different, actually, you said you were gonna come back to keeping the record open and what that.
Oh, yeah, 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 thank you, thank you. Okay, so, um, okay, yeah, this is good. So, um, you have a hundred and twenty days to make a decision. And, um, of course, the applicant can grant extensions. But, uh, as I mentioned, that there, if somebody requests the hearing to be continued, um, it, the, for the first hearing, you have to, um, indulge that. And or if you wanted to continue the hearing, you haven't come to, come to a conclusion yet, you want to continue the hearing. Um, one of the ways that you can, one scenario, if you. Didn't want to accept any more public testimony, uh, verbal public testimony. Um, because in some applications, you kind of just need to draw the line somewhere or else they'll keep going forever, to be honest. So. You draw the line somewhere, but you don't, we, there's been some things that have been raised that's still a little unresolved. You can keep, the one scenario is you keep the record open, um. It's called this, kind of a seven and seven, uh, uh, seven, seven, seven rule, I believe. So seven days. Um, for, um, anybody to submit additional information, including the applicant. Then in the next seven days is for the applicant to be able to rebut that information. Um, so it's, it's just the seven and seven days and then it closes and then it would come back to you for the hearing. The applicant always, because it's a quasi judicial type of hearing, the applicant always has the, the right to the final said, the final word. The final rebuttal.
So that would all be in writing then, those.
Those would all be in writing, yeah. So you're, you're, you're done with the, you're done with the meetings, but you wanted to keep the record open to settle some things. So. You know, someone says, well, I think the slope is twenty five percent there and that would trigger this and then. They have information they can submit, you know, a slope map or something. And then the applicant would have another seven days to say, no, they got that from. You know, somewhere that's not relevant elsewhere, but yeah.
So you, so you're gonna continue it, you're leaving the record open for seven more days that they can get any final things, then anybody can submit anything in writing. It goes into the record. But you don't have to then come back and open up to a bunch more verbal testimony.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's still evidence that you'll weigh in once it's, the record is closed when you come back.
Um, this one, we, uh, we touched on earlier, it's called the razor wave it, uh. Um, clause, and really what this means, a- as I said before, is if. Something isn't raised during the local proceedings, if your, if your decision is appealed. Um, it gets appealed to the land use board of appeals. Need, that new information can't be brought up. Um, uh, to, to appeal it on. It has to be based on what was brought up at the, in the local hearings procedure. Um, and, and this reminds me that, you guys probably know this, but, uh, Oregon has a special. Um, judiciary just to hear land use matters because they recognized many years ago that land use is complicated. And instead of sending it to, um, judges that hear a whole slew of a bunch of other stuff, and this is only one part of what they hear. We have judges in the state that only hear land use issues, so they're very focused, um, and very educated on like matters. Okay. This is the part that I wanted to get to because we've talked about it a lot. So, um. The, the, your, your hearing body must be free of personal interests or bias. Um, and problems that question whether you are impartial, um, have to do with either ex parte contacts. Conflicts of interest or bias. So, ex parte contact is contact by a party on a, on a fact at issue. Under circumstances which do not involve all parties to the proceedings. So, these contacts can be oral or in writing. Um, and they're discouraged, um, generally discouraged in favor, um, of, of public hearing process. So we're talking about. Now quasi judicial hearings and legislative hearings, like I said, you can go out and survey the community. And figure out, do you guys think this is a good idea or not? Quasi judicial, um, application. You shouldn't be going out and soliciting input from folks. And if somebody stops you in the supermarket. And knows you're a city counselor or planning commissioner and wants to talk to you about that. Um, my first advice would be to say, hold, I, I really want you to hold that for the hearing. If they are very adamant, which sometimes they are, and they want to still, you know, get your ear and tell you about it. Um, you'll need to disclose that and we'll talk about that in a minute here.
And that could include social media as well. People will want to try to write you on social media or bring up a topic and have a public hearing. And on social media before a national hearing coming here. So it's important that we don't engage in those.
My question would be, if somebody did approach you in, from the public and you're just out at the store. Would it be beneficial for that person, say, somebody approached me to time date? This is what was said, write it down.
It would be good. What you're gonna need to do, i- if you have an ex parte contest, because they're not all completely unavoidable, especially in a small town, right? Um, you'll need to disclose that. So you, when, when the hearing, and this is part of having the script, this, the, um. Uh, basically you should be giving the opportunity, the chair of the planning commission, um, or, uh, do, uh, the mayor, they do run the hearing, the mayor. Runs a hearing, should be giving the opportunity for people to disclose ex parte contacts. Conflict of interest and bias, and we'll get to those.
So that should be in the script.
So, so that should be in the script. So if, if, if one of the, you know, if anybody has had an ex parte contact. They need to disclose that on the record and they need to describe the circumstances. Like, hey, I met so and so, or I met somebody in the supermarket and. They, you know, they wanted to talk to me about this application. Here's what they said. And you know, you don't need to get all the details, but enough detail to be able to be, feel like you, you're giving. Everyone the same information. They told me that, you know, they, they, they saw these folks doing some illegal stuff there for the last two years, blah, blah, blah. So you, you put all that out there. Um. That's all you need to do. So, that, that's what you need to disclose is make sure that everybody knows what you know about that circumstance. Um, and, and so avoid it if possible. If not, you disclose it.
If, if you just go do a site visit at, at, let's say, a property location. Uh, but you don't actually talk to anybody, property owner or anything, is, is that considered ex parte?
Perfect transition, thank you. So, um, yes, it is. So they are considered ex parte contact. Um, there is, there's law on that now.
And we have in the past, yeah, we, we have done that, not talked to anybody and we have disclosed this.
Yes.
Have you gone together or alone?
Only one, one time that you and I went.
Okay, so just as long as you don't have a quorum. So if you have a quorum and you go to a site visit, technically a public meeting, you didn't notice that. So what you want to do, and it's real simple, what you want to do, if you go out there by yourself. You basically say, here's what, I went out there, I wanted to be able to familiarize, refamiliarize myself with the site, um, it's been a while or I've never seen it before. Um, and here's what I saw, you know, it was gently sloping, it looked like there was a level placed there, looked like maybe there's some drainage. You just provide kind of. Your observations. Now, if you go with somebody else, then you both, you're gonna probably want to, um. Say that, what you observed, they're gonna want to say what they observed and maybe then if you had had a conversation. You're gonna want to have, you know, talk about what you discussed. So it gets a little bit more complicated, but it's not, not a big deal generally. Um. Some places really frown on site visits, I think it's the best way to get, uh, to see something, you know?
Yeah, was on. Can't define it one time. And they just think that's wanting something to convince, to. Be on the same page with the other person. If she knew a lot of time and seen it, she would understand. In the long term.
So there's. There is an opportunity, we could schedule things if that ever needed, or you can say to staff, can you go out and take pictures and bring back for us?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, pictures worth a thousand.
But it has to be at the hea- hearing and the meeting.
We went down the speed.
So in a meeting, everybody went, oh, what?
Yeah, I don't, that's probably okay. I mean, yeah, you can add the accessibility, but maybe that's probably fine, yeah.
Actually, we had, the applicant had a very, a, a pressing variance for that site.
Okay.
And they were here at the meeting. And this was early on, we hadn't been planning commission more than six months and. It was in the summer, and they said, well, we just live two blocks down here. So everybody walked down there and and took and looked at it.
Yeah.
Together, so.
Well, and I'll tell you, I mean, today I drove up to an area, and because what I'm finding is what we see on the maps is not necessarily what this town actually does. And I got to an area and went, that is not what I was expecting, and I had to take a lot of pictures, and I sent it to our planner. I said, we have an issue. This is something that isn't on the map. Here's this map, here's this map. And so there is an opportunity that I can be those legs for you guys as well, and I'm willing to do that. The biggest concern that I would have is that if two of you guys went out there, and then you talked about it, and you made up your mind, and then everybody else didn't have the same access. So it's not on you to convince that other person. The applicant has the burden of proof to show it. So how do we make sure that information is equally available to everybody? And so just try to make sure that it's fair and that every, like Josh was saying, does everybody know what you know? If you're making your decision based on this, how do we share that information to get it there? So. Sometimes courts even do that. I've seen judges say, we're gonna meet everybody out there, and everybody gets out there, and they, um, where we're at is we have to make sure that it's a public meeting, is it noticed, is the public welcome? And so if we're in a meeting and then we would have to go, uh, do I?
Now with live streaming, it's.
Yeah, do I have to get my phone, or we're live streaming from my phone on Zoom? And, you know, so it gets interesting to make sure that we're meeting the law in that requirement.
It might be better in that circumstance now with streaming to just um, continue the meeting, and then each one of you kind of go out on your own time and look at the fence for this, the property for the fence variance is for. Um, okay, so let's keep moving through. Sorry, it's just taking longer than thought. A pretty good conversation. I just want.
In the last, just to reiterate what Josh said as well, most important piece of it is that you disclose it. If you don't disclose it is when the problems happen. If you bring it up and acknowledge that you've had that contact or you've done that site visit, that's your covering in making sure that you put it out in public.
Okay, so let's, we're gonna talk about conflict of interest. There's two types. There's an actual conflict of interest, and there's potential conflict of interest. So a potential conflict of interest is any decision by a person acting as a public official, which could be to the private pecuniary or financial benefit or detriment of you, your relative, a member of your household, or a business with which you, your relative, or a member of your household is associated. So if it's not a cut and dry thing, like if this gets approved, you're gonna make money from this, it's a potential conflict of interest. So if you have a potential conflict of interest, you must declare it, but you may participate in the decision um, and or 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 recommendation. So same kind of thing. So it's about declaring, this is what you do if you have a potential conflict of interest. So you need to declare it. So when the the chairperson or the the mayor um, calls for it, they ask, are there any by any potential conflicts of interest, have any ex parte contact, um, et cetera, et cetera, bias? Please disclose it. So that's the opportunity for you to go on record to say, you know, to disclose the circumstances. If you don't know that you may have a potential conflict of interest till the middle of the hearing, so you didn't realize that the applicant was actually related to somebody who you're related to, or something along those lines that happens, you disclose it at the earliest possible time if you don't know at the, at the time of the hearing. So you can, i- if you have a potential conflict, um, you can, like I said, you can participate in the decision-making process, but all, just keep in mind, there's, there's a perception out there, right? So if your vote isn't needed, like you have a quorum and your vote isn't needed, and you think that just there's a, there's gonna be a perception issue, even though there's not that real conflict of interest, you may want to consider recusing yourself. Um, it's not a requirement for a potential conflict of interest, but it's something to consider, you know, especially in small towns, or it can be, you know, certain climates. And I could get creative on that.
I think I read that in our code, that the conflict of interest or the potential conflict of interest, you still count towards the quorum, even if you have to recuse yourself from taking part in the process, since you were here to make the form, but it still keeps the form.
So that will, we'll get into that with a real conflict of interest. So the only time you'd wanna.
Can I ask a quick question too? Sorry to interrupt.
Totally.
Sorry, this is Wendy. Um, yeah, so conflict of interest, the actual conflict has to be financial gain?
Both potential and actual conflict have to be um, financial gain, because we'll get into bias later.
Okay, so we're just talking about potential financial gain or certain financial gain. So that that that's the variable.
Of of you, your relative, member of your household, or the business with which you're affiliated.
Okay.
One of your, your household's affiliated, so.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
No, that's, that's a great question, because that's what differentiates, differentiates conflict of interest with bias, which we'll, we'll talk about in a minute. So the only time you would want to recuse yourself if you have a potential conflict of interest is you, you have, you know, you have a quorum of the remaining um, counselors or planning commission, so there won't be a problem with voting. Um, and you feel like you making a decision is going to um, not look really good for some reason. So you can recuse yourself, but you're not required to do that.
So if it gets continued to next week, um, am I good if I just did it the once?
No, thank you. So you you need to do it, um, I should have said that, it was right at the bottom. Like, there is more than one hearing, you wanna say it every time, and you, there's not gonna be many times where you're gonna have to do that multiple times, but there may be times where you have to do that twice. So you're gonna have to declare that again, like even though it's part of the record, you do declare it at each one of the hearings. Thank you. So an actual conflict of interest is different in that um, the decision by the person acting as the public official, which is the planning commissioner or a council member, um, would, would, it would be to the private financial benefit or detriment of you, your relative, member of household or business. So it has a direct connection to you having a financial benefit. So in that case, you must declare um, declare that conflict, and you you must not participate. Um, except, so let's go to the next slide. So, oh, actually, there's a few more details. So you wanna publicly announce your conflict. You wanna say, I'm, I'm a direct relative of this person, or I'm a, I I own this business, and this is my partner, and we're applying together. So you um, you announce that, you refrain from participating on any issue. And in fact, what you should do is recuse yourself and actually leave the room. And then, and not even be in the audience. You should just leave the room. It just makes it really clear um, and concise that way.
I I own some commercial property, and so I can, if if I'm the applicant, then, you know, if I'm applying for a fund, then I mean, I wouldn't leave the room because I'm the applicant.
No, but you're also not acting as the plan, a planning commissioner. You don't like take your hat off and they go sit down and say, I love that, that, uh, plan.
So in that situation, you'd be in the audience the whole time as the applicant. That's not the same as somebody else is presenting, and you're connected to it, and you need to leave, but.
Yeah.
What happens if you're not there and you don't have a quorum?
Now, that, and that sort of, he's actually the applicant in that case. I don't know the answer to that one. You have, basically, you should ask him for an extension of time, so you can continue it, so that, yeah, some other planning commissioners show up, really. Um, okay, so yeah, let's go to the next one. So the only time you're allowed to vote, if you have an actual conflict of interest, the only time you're allowed to vote is if you will not have a quorum without your vote. So sometimes, and that shouldn't really be a circumstance where so and so's out of town for a week.
That's the next slide, by the way.
Oh, am I, oh, yeah, go to the next one, sorry. So it shouldn't be like, just because so and so's out of town for a week, I need to make a decision, even though I have a conflict of interest. It's more like, we, we don't have, we only have four acting, you know, counselors right now, or whatever it is. Um, there are three acting counselors, because two people left, and we're recruiting for those positions, and they're vacant right now. So everybody needs to be able to, everyone needs to make a decision to be able to meet your forum requirements in your code. If that's the case, you can make, you can actually make a decision, but you don't participate in any of the other process. You don't participate in the deliberation. All you do is speak up for the vote and vote on it. And be cautious, of course, it's not gonna look good, often.
So this was the one before too, and and so, I mean, his recommendation is leave the room, but that means, yeah, you're not being a part of nodding your head, or shaking your head, or influencing, or uh, taking part in the conversation. I mean, if if you have a financial benefit, you got, uh, now, I would think the one other thing is not only accusing themselves, but could they testify?
So that happens sometimes, and the, I the what I always say is, don't do it. Really, if you can avoid it, don't do it. It's really awkward for everybody, your counselors or your planning commissioners, for the members of the public, neighbors, anybody that's participating, it's really awkward for your staff. Um, but I have seen it done. You need, if that happens, you recuse yourself. You, you really wanna talk to your legal counsel when something like that happens. First off, I'm not an attorney, I believe, I've been doing this for a long time. But you really wanna get legal advice when it comes to that. What you definitely need to do um, is make it very clear, if you come up, you take your hat off, and you come up and you testify, you need to make it very clear that you're not testifying on behalf of the planning commission or the council. You're testifying as an individual citizen in the matter. You need to make it very clear, you need to say that. And then you need to obviously not go back up to the dais to make a vote, but you probably should leave at that point. Uh, but really, if that's kind of thing happens, um, if you know, if a planning commissioner or counselor knows that that might happen, you wanna talk to your staff ahead of time, and your staff's probably gonna wanna talk to your legal counsel to be able to lay out some framework and some ground rules on that, because that's the kind of stuff, when something gets appealed, that is, it's very, just very litigious. It can, that can, that could swing a decision just on that alone. And then would be remanded to come back to you just because of a procedural issue or um, a potential conflict or bias issue. Okay, so let's get on, let's get into bias. So a bias um, is when a a commissioner or a counselor cannot render a fair judgment in the matter because of an acquaintance, acquaintance or relationship with someone or something in the land use case. So this differs from conflict of interest, because we're not talking about financial gain. But it could be something, um, it's any, basically anything other than financial gain, to be honest. Anything else, anything that could create a potential bias. Let's go on to the next one. Um, same thing with all these, what do you do? You disclose your potential bias. What you do in this, in this case is you state whether or not you believe the bias requires disqualification. So it's really, when it comes to bias, it's up to that individual um, person, that counselor or that planning commissioner to say whether or not they feel that they can render a fair judgment based on the circumstances at hand, and based on their relationship with um, whoever is that is creating that bias. So once again, but once again, that i- i- the perception of that can look bad, right?
So this is your best friends applying, you're not financially benefiting, you're not related, but your relationship with them is gonna be, you're biased in that, or it's your next door neighbor, and, you know, there's something like that, and um.
Exactly. So you you have, you know this person, um, but you may be able to say, you know, this is a pretty straightforward situation. I don't feel like my relationship with my neighbor is going to affect my decision, and that can be legit, right?
Can I ask a question? So can I ask a question? Can you, so it, does it, I mean, because we're, a lot of us are neighbors. So, so, because this is a small town, so so do you have to disclose that, oh, that's my neighbor, or that's my person who lives two doors down, or like, if you don't have any bias, do you have to disclose it?
I think so, because, yeah, I'm not, I think so, you should, yes. You should disclose it, because disclosing it's really easy, and it it will cover the city in any potential liability lawsuit kind of thing in the future, so.
So you just have to say, hey, that's my neighbor, or that's my person who lives two doors down, I happen to know him, we talk all the time. They walk by, they say hi every morning. I mean, do you have to, you have to disclose that kind of stuff?
No, you you should, you should say, hey, you don't need to go into all detail. That's my neighbor who lives two door down, you know, I've known, I've known them for twenty five years or whatever.
Okay.
And and then you follow up by saying, but I don't believe my relationship with my neighbor um, has created any bias, or is going to in any way, shape, or form affect my decision in this.
Okay.
Application. So, yeah, that's, and and that's totally understandable. Yeah, I mean, you know a lot of people, you, you know, in in your community, it's small, so that makes sense. Um, but i- if there is a circumstance that is maybe a little bit closer to home, or there is a little bit more of an opportunity for a perception issue, you also maybe you wanna take the opportunity to just scan the field and say, we have enough members to vote on this. You don't need my vote. I'm gonna recuse myself, um, even though I don't think I'm biased, I'm gonna recuse myself, because I don't want you guys to think that, you know, I'm biased. So that's just the general recommendation on that. But um, it's your individual decision to be able to decide whether or not you feel you can still render a good decision. I think that, is that it? That's it. So we've got a bunch of resources that are available. So as I said earlier, I'm available if you guys, you know, have questions. Usually I interact with staff, um, uh, like the city manager level, but I definitely get calls from planning commissioners and city counselors over the years, you know, asking about certain things. Um, and I just, you know, I provide, you know, what I, what I would, you know, just some general guidance. I won't provide legal advice, but I'll provide general guidance. Um, other resources, we've got a planning commissioner handbook that was developed from the Oregon chapter of American Planning Association and DLCD. Got a guide for public officials, which is a state of Oregon um, publication. And then we also have a document called Putting the People on Planning. So those are all good resources if you run into any issues later on. And my contact information's right there, so feel free to reach out if you guys have questions, and then I'm here if you guys have anything else that.
And I can follow up if anybody wants the um, presentation, I can certainly.
So so I I have a question of, uh, well, let's say somebody comes for a, a application for variance on that side. And let's say the code is four feet, and they want a variance to six feet. And you look at that situation, and you say, in that particular situation, I think the variance is is okay. Are you opening, are you opening up a can of worms? Because we, you know, are you, you know, because like, I've always kind of felt like, well, this is my own opinion. Just because it might be applicable in this situation to allow that, doesn't mean you have to grant that to everybody else. But but then again, are you opening up a can of worms?
Yeah, so so here's, so variants are kind of tricky animals in the sense that your variance, your criteria for your variance should be pretty specific. Um, usually a variance has to do with something that, you know, some physical topography on the property that prevents them from meeting a certain thing, right? So if you can't just make a variant, you shouldn't be just ma- making, making a variance or allowing something to happen outside of the norm if it doesn't meet those criteria, right? So if it meets those criteria, then you can feel confident that you're not opening a can of worms. If you are just saying, oh, yeah, I went out there, and in that case, it actually doesn't make sense, and it doesn't meet the criteria, you're potentially opening yourself up to a can of worms, and potentially a lawsuit, probably, I mean, it all depends on the circumstances, but the neighbor doesn't like it. In that case, really, you should be like, is a four foot fence height really the thing we want? Is it, does four feet make sense? Or maybe six feet does make sense, and maybe you go back and you make a code change to allow all fences to be six feet. I mean, that's just an example, but, yeah, you need to be concerned about above precedent setting, definitely.
So there were a couple of questions that Commissioner Brown put in the um, chat, and I want to make sure we address. So on notices for the meeting for the quasi judicial and the land use, uh, is it the planning commission's responsibility of the city? Uh, I guess my answer to that is, it's the city's uh, responsibility as who the individual is applying to. So it's our obligation to get notices out, as we do for all public meetings, uh, that we are under the law for doing that. Uh, and then I think that's.
Yeah, that's, that's everything. Everything else was just, I was responding as conversations were happening. That was the only question I had. The other ones, I just, I just went ahead and interrupted, so. The other ones, I just, I just went ahead and interrupted, so thank you, though.
Yes, if we have, there there's a few unique situations in this town in that there's, there's some private. Buildings or homes that are actually on the public right of way. Over property lines.
That are on private property.
Yeah, I mean, there's some weird. There's a few weird situations in that regard.
Yeah.
You know, it's not everywhere, but there are a few, and so, I mean, that's all, I think, part of. Not that those type of things are gonna play in the city, but it's like.
Yeah, and when we've addressed those with our our staff in the past, that we can make variances, as long as it's like. Character, if we choose to, because of the character of the community. Instead of a new building coming in and making them, for example, be twenty feet off the street when everything else is on. Is not, then those were situations. And I think Mark, that's what you're referring to.
Well, and I I wanna be careful that the hardest thing about being a planning commissioner in my mind is that you don't set policy. Or precedence. Planning commission, right, you know, is, here's the facts laid before you, here's what the code says. And even if it's a variance application, does it fit the criteria based on the code or this and that? And and even if it goes against everything in you that doesn't make sense, you still have to rule on those things. Because commission doesn't set policy. That's the elected bodies' role. And so um I have seen that be something that planning commissioners have been very frustrated. That when the code doesn't make sense or the circumstance doesn't. Eh eh it really is a situation where the code needs to be changed. Uh and you wanna give them that permission to do that thing, but that's not the planning commission's role. And that's the frustrating part is because it would essentially be a change in policy. You guys have to rule on this, and but that's where an applicant can appeal to the council. Who can be a policy change decision maker or disagree with that representation. So it's, I think, harder on the land use stuff sometimes to be the planning commission. Because you don't get to put opinion into it. You, I mean, you have to make those rulings based on those facts and those circumstances. These guys are elected to make hard decisions that do involve the opinion of the policy and um. I don't know, it's it's both jobs are not easy. So thank you all for volunteering in in the capacities that our cities would not exist. And moving forward without both of you, and uh I'm grateful for for your service. Any other questions for Josh?
Go buy the book or have the book officially changed, Ron. Did we hear that before?